Regular meeting Monday, October tenth, twenty twenty-two of Rockland Fire Protection District to work. In attendance is myself, trustee Bernstein, the attorney, and Chris Johnson are attending via phone. We have, I always mess it up, I want to say acting chief.
Interim chief.
Interim chief. Interim chief.
That's all good. Best time to anything.
Interim chief Pacasa and.
Deputy Mike Yallow.
Deputy Yallow. Then other members of public in attendance. I'd like to ask everyone to rise for pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, the liberty and justice for all. All right, first thing, I'd like to make a motion to allow trustee Johnson to attend via telephone due to being on shift. And Jim, do you need a roll call vote or just a voice vote?
Voice vote's fine.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right. So I'd like to see if we can move the meeting along today. We tend to have a hard stop at six thirty trying to cover as much stuff as we can. If we don't, we can have another meeting, but see what we can do. Agenda item number three, consideration of minutes of the regular meeting of the Rockland Fire Protection District for Monday, September twelfth, twenty twenty-two. Took a look and I did not see anything that needed to be revised.
Not bad.
I think all looks good.
I'm good, none good.
All right. Like to make a motion to approve the minutes as presented. And roll call vote, trustee Bernstein.
Yes.
Trustee Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Malowski, aye. And moving on, the chiefs report.
Should let go or you'll be there?
Okay. So you all have copies?
Yes, sir.
And for the month of September, we had six EMS calls. And that's it. One thing to note is that our average emergency response time, you see it in the yellow there on the bottom right. We're pretty proud of that number, three and a half minutes. Fortunately, for all six calls, it looks like our ambulance was in quarters. We try to do our best to keep that ambulance and to keep that company in quarters at all times, but you guys know how it goes. All it takes is one call or some training and those times go up a little bit. So we do our best to try to, to try to provide that service and September proved to be a good month.
Yeah, it's a very good time.
And just a reminder, our open house is this Saturday. So the information's on our Facebook page and our Instagram page. I definitely encourage, if you're not doing anything, to stop by. It should be a good time, it's supposed to be a beautiful day. Knock on the chair. But we're looking forward to it, so.
Very good, I think you put that info on our social media, we had it emailed, so yeah.
It's Saturday for one to four.
One to four.
Yep.
Any more responses to the surveys you sent out?
Nope.
No? Okay.
As I get a mile, definitely share.
Very good.
Lake Forest, we had fifteen calls for the month of September, putting their total in the year up to one sixty-six. Looks like twelve of those fifteen were three hundred series, so the rescue emergency response calls. That's broken out on the back for you, call by call, average response time dispatched on scene, six twenty-nine. Nothing real crazy there. We also have our open house on Sunday, so if people wanted to do it Saturday and Sunday from eleven to at Station One, which is two fifty-five West Deer Path, we'll have some events, probably some similar stuff. But if people can make only one of the two days on the weekend, they've got the weekend wide open. And also chief included a link to the Lake County website for burning. It sounds like some restrictions or restrictions have been lifted, but I think people still get confused when we get into Lake Forest as well, with what they're supposed to be burning. So it sounds like, I haven't checked the link, but it sounds like it's pretty, pretty straightforward. You can click on it, it'll say yea or nay, this is what you can burn. Like trash and stuff like that is not supposed to be burned, so it's supposed to be natural, you know, refuse of branches and items like that. But if anybody is having any questions, they can go to that link, maybe you guys can share that on a page. And a question should be answered right there, so. Okay?
Very good.
Questions for me or anything?
Mine.
Okay.
Chris, anything for either chief?
Mike or Mike.
Both, both sounds good.
All right. Moving on to item five, public comment. The district trustees allocate time for those individuals who would like the opportunity to address the fire district trustees on any matter not listed on the agenda. Each person addressing the trustees is asked to limit their comments to a maximum of five minutes. Any public comment? None, no public commentator. All right. Jim, your turn, attorneys report.
Okay, we got a number of items on the agenda, so I can address. How about I'll just address those when we get to them on the agenda at just the same time?
Sounds good.
One item, one item, one item that is not, anything Carl can help me out here? Carl and I had a, I sent Carl an email about the proposed levy that we'll do in December, but we have to do the truth in taxation number. Now keep in mind, this year, that's the first time under the property tax debt law, that the allowable increase is at five percent. You can't make this amount because of the record inflation that is going on. So this creates, obviously, you know, the question is, how, what do we want to put the increase back? Because you'd be entitled to at least five percent plus a little bit more for any new construction. And no districts add some new construction. New construction is not included under the limitations of your PTA. So in our email, and I didn't, I didn't get a good chance to respond to it because I was going out of town, but I think the suggestion was to possibly add maybe a special meeting to talk about this issue. And if Carl wants to add anything to it, he might yes.
And Jim, what I was recommending is that at the November meeting, that we would have a miniature, sorry, miniature, a financial workshop to talk about setting the levy in December. I think though, for the purposes of the truth in taxation, we'll go with four nine nine. Because we're retiring the mortgage, so we don't need to capture absolutely every penny of the levy this year.
I agree.
So if we just go with the four nine nine, I think that's like two thousand dollars less than what we could possibly get. So in the scheme of things, on a, you know, a seven hundred thousand dollar budget, I'm not terribly concerned about that. But we're very likely to, you know, to, I would imagine the board would definitely look hard at actually even reducing the levy to a certain extent because of the, our expenses will be going down by almost a hundred thousand dollars a year. We should be fine as far as, we don't, you know, we don't need to have a truth in taxation hearing, we can just do the form.
Okay. Sounds good to me, Carl. So I'll wait on the other items. We can talk about them as we address them on each other.
Okay, sounds good, Jim. So nothing else until we get to each of those agenda items?
Yes.
All right. Moving on to number seven, treasurer report.
Okay, on the balance sheet, our current balances as of September thirtieth, the checking account is at six hundred and twenty thousand, nine hundred and three dollars and thirty-eight cents. The reserve account is at three hundred and eleven thousand, three hundred and nineteen dollars and twenty-eight cents. And petty cash is at a hundred dollars and forty-five cents. For total assets of nine hundred and thirty-two thousand, three hundred and twenty-three dollars and eleven cents. On budget tracking, we're five tolls of the way through, or forty-two percent. We've received, about seventy-six percent of our revenue has come in so far to date. Fifty percent of the contract, services contract has been paid, though, yeah, that as of, is, I'm sorry, as of September thirtieth, we made a payment on October first, so we are really at seventy-five percent. Everything else is at or below budget, so we're where we should be with that. Any questions?
Not on this, looks good. All right, I'd like to make a motion to approve the treasurer report as presented.
Second.
All right, roll call vote, trustee Bernstein.
Yes.
Trustee Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Malowski, aye. And outstanding invoices, Carl?
Yeah, it's a pretty late month. Mortgage, seventy-five hundred, gas, forty-one dollars. Phone and internet, Comcast, two hundred and eleven dollars. BLR monitoring for a quarter, a hundred and seventeen dollars. Legal is fourteen hundred, so that's seven fifty plus the cost of publishing some of those notices. And then the Visa was ninety dollars, you can see on the page right behind it, that was to replace the UPS battery in the server, or the UPS for the server in the office that runs the mail system, so. We seem to be missing our comment bill this month, which has been found, so I'll probably get a double bill next month.
Okay.
So we're in total then of nine thousand, three hundred and sixty-six dollars and ninety-five cents.
All right. I'd like to make a motion to approve the outstanding invoices in the amount of nine thousand, three hundred and sixty-six dollars and ninety-five cents.
Second.
Roll call vote, trustee Bernstein.
Yes.
Trustee Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Malowski, aye. And Jim, I did let Carl know just before the meeting that we did intend to itemize, itemized checks to approve from last month, but he's going to send that out this week so we can verify that. All right. Moving on to agenda nine, approval of the fiscal year twenty twenty-two annual financial report and statement of receipts and dispersments. Carl?
Okay, so I sent those out, so these are the two reports that we have to file by the end of this month. One, a statement of all monies received, just kind of the highlights of the cash in, the cash out, and the major expense sizes, whatever, you know, salaries. So that will need to, I'd sign that one, it needs to be notarized, and then we need to file it with the county clerk and publish it in the newspaper and then file the notice of publication with the county clerk. So hopefully Jim can take care of that. But that's, you know, sort of questions, how to, how to get him the physical copies since that has to.
So Jim, I'll have the signed and notarized copy. Well, actually, we, then you have to make a motion to approve it. Do that first, and then I can coordinate with Jim.
Yeah, 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 we have to approve them.
Yep. Anything else on this?
Well, also, we could do them together, I think, is the annual financial report.
Okay.
Controller. Again, that's the, that's the big one, that goes through, pretty much, you know, it's like a mini audit of our financial status, so. And on that one, I, I have a form, once you approve it, we have a form that says, it has been provided to each member of the government units, board of elected officials, presented in, either in person or by live phone or web connection during a public meeting, and was approved by a three-fifths majority vote, so. Obviously, we'll vote to approve that, and then Amy will sign this, and we get it notarized. Then I can file this one electronically, so that doesn't require anything, so. I don't know if we want to do separate motions for these reports or do them together?
Jim, you want separate, or can we do them together?
You can probably do them together.
Okay.
I think so.
All right, so I'd like to make a motion to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-two annual financial report as presented by the treasurer, as well as the, what are we calling this here?
Statement of receipts.
Statement of receipts and dispersments for fiscal year ending April thirtieth, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
All right, and roll call vote, trustee Bernstein.
Yes.
Trustee Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Malowski, aye. All right, so Jim.
Marson, you, you could just send that to me, I generally just send that by email.
Okay.
Because it's not that, timeliness of it is not that significant.
Right.
So the levy and the budget, I'll help you add in person, but this is by and going by mail.
And, and I'll send you a electronic copy so that you can get it published.
Okay, thanks, Carl.
Great, all right, so we'll go ahead and sign that and get it notarized tonight, and I'll give it to Carl and have him send it off to you, Jim.
Okay.
All right. All right. Moving on to item ten, discussion and action regarding the IGA with NIFIS. Chris, Jim, do you guys have anything on that?
I do, I emailed Ben Chester today, and I told him we are, as I told him before, there was a couple housing items that we were working on, including the generator and the locks. I told him we're almost done with the generator. I said, you know, the elevator is a little, you know, probably, I don't know when we're going to get that one done, but I don't think that's as important. So he said, Ben said, they're ready to go, just let them know when we have all our stuff in order. And we can coordinate moving in.
Okay.
So I know, I know you guys mentioned the locks, so like, Chris, maybe you can address that.
Okay, so they wanted, so the generator's, generator's running. It is currently turned off from automatic run due to, it needs some rubber being replaced. But everything, everything in there is good to go. I'm waiting on a quote for that, or they may be waiting for parts, and I'm a hundred percent sure. I'll call for them this week, since I haven't heard anything outside of maybe getting a bill. I'll go to handle that, and then as far as the locks go, is, from, from you two, Chris and Jim, is that something we need to have done prior to them getting in here? I'm going to guess so, due to their equipment.
Yes. I guess I'd leave that up to them. But the locks can be quick, they just need our approval. They've already come out, they've already serviced, they've already looked at the locks and basically done their service, what they could, they need a special key. There's two proposals they sent us, one for a punch. And replace what we have right now, the front handle needs to be replaced, cannot be repaired, needs to be replaced. That handle, I sent Marson, both you and Carl, the estimates.
Yep.
For us to replace the handle with a light kind, and that was a considerable amount of money for a push button, for a tune of eight hundred and thirty-four dollars.
Yeah, for that mechanism, yeah.
Yep, so I sent you a second quote, and I, he just sent it to me at six oh four. And that was a hundred, a hundred and thirty-nine dollars plus thirty dollars apart, so we're talking about, really, twenty percent cost to get a key handle set, which is what's on other doors and not push button, so. That second, second item I sent you is their service trips and all, all the work you perform, putting the handles on the inside for a tune of six hundred and eighty-two dollars and fifty-two cents for the lesser, for the lesser, you know, for the key option.
Okay. Now, was.
Because, because the numbers were higher, I didn't want to proceed without, for approval.
Sure. Now for the key option, or rather for the, for the access to the bay door, please remind, was the intent for the board to also have access to that, or was that only for NIFIS?
No, no, the keys will be the same key that we have, you know, universal key or whatever, the master key.
Yeah.
It'll just prevent the public from voting during voting time or in the building, to having unrestricted access to the bay floors. So it will be the key going from the living quarters to the bay floor, but obviously for the bay floor out for means of egress, it will not be secured, you know, saying you can go out.
Yeah, 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 I'm just saying, in.
Trapped in anywhere, so for a life safety concern, from, you know, from Lake Forest, the bureau side, there's not key means of egress.
Okay.
It's just securing the bay floor from the living side with, he's just putting handles and then replacing the locks that are part of this most exterior eastern door.
Okay. Yeah, so, so with, with that, I'd say I think the key option would be more secure if they're going to keep that there, if someone wants to play with.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, I didn't want to spend thirteen hundred dollars for a punch pad for items now.
Yeah.
But it's, it's just an extra seven hundred, so. Just need approval, and that guy can come back out and take care of it, because Dan Keeman's closed, it's now the JLR.
Yeah, right, the bottom out or something, yeah.
Yeah, you can understand for, being a fire station, particularly in the, in the, back in the, you know, paid-on-call days.
Yeah. You paid with a lot more keys.
Yeah, you couldn't, you didn't want forty keys floating around, right?
So that's fine. So Jim.
So just need approval on that.
Jim, we got a, what kind of motion do you need to give Chris, Chris the approval?
Yeah, just make a motion to approve the invoice.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve, Chris, whatever your estimate was, I'll say not exceed a thousand dollars. To get. Yep, yeah. Not exceed a thousand dollars to get the doors and locks prepared for NIFIS.
Can I, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Just a basic one, and I, I know the, the key, the key pad is more money, and I'm not necessarily encouraging that, but is there a, considering NIFIS, is that going to mean there's going to be more keys for that? So then? That's an interesting question, Jim, and that is that either A, they can mount a Knox box valve, the fire chief's can test this, or, or freely, they can do a Knox box, I don't know. Some, we just, families have these Knox boxes on buildings to gain access to their keys. And this could be a similar scenario, where either they have a punch pad with a lockbox mounted to the building, or on the handle, what have you, that there are keys or county keys that would access this, it's kind of like a Mavis, a universal key. So there's, there's ways to work around it, or there's not eight hundred keys out for the building, you know? Okay, good, I, I just was in my rudimentary thinking on it, and so I'm not really asking, but very valid.
So, so here's my thought, and I may want to amend the motion to, to allow you, Chris, to have not exceed two thousand dollars. If you wanted to get in touch with whoever you need to at NIFIS to find out what would be more convenient for them, whether it be having, you know, the additional, you know, I'll say labor of getting that Knox box, whatever they got to do, or would they be more comfortable having a keypad? I mean, it's really not that large of an expense.
Well, given that.
Seven hundred, seven hundred.
Yeah, I think they should pay for it. Again, all we're charging them for the use of the building is utilities. So that's something, I think it's a good idea to ask them what they, what they'd like, but I think they should pay for it.
Pay the difference.
Yeah.
Okay. So, so, yeah.
You can still give Chris the authority if you want, and, you know, and you can make the judgment follow.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm still okay with that, if, if, if you want, I'm still okay with, you know, raising it to two thousand. Chris, I can give you, you know, the, you know, use your, use your judgment whether or not you want to reach out to NIFIS with Jim and let them know, hey, look, it's going to cost us eight hundred bucks to, to do this, we'll cover it, no problem. If you want the, you know, convenience of having a keypad, we're going to put you guys on the hook for seven hundred bucks.
Yep, got it.
All right.
I'll reach out to my NIFIS contact.
All right, so to summarize, approval to Chris Johnson to get the building locks taken care of to the tune, not exceed two thousand dollars?
Yeah, you can do fifteen hundred if you want it, because that was below that, but.
Okay, well, not, not, not exceed fifteen hundred.
There you go.
That's my motion.
Second.
All right. And roll call vote, trustee Bernstein.
Yes.
Trustee, trustee Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Malowski, aye. All right, did you get that, did you get all that, Jim?
I'm going to have to watch the video, so.
All right, no problem. Moving on to eleven, resolution declaring authorizing the sale of certain real property of the Rockland Fire Protection District, Lake County, Illinois. Let's see. So this is kind of like a, what do we got, a two-part, three-part deal here, Jim?
Yes, and, and Chris, do you want to make that announcement? So, yeah, I will be accusing myself of all these resolutions due to a conflict of interest with, with this transaction.
Sounds good, Chris, thank you.
In fact, that trustee Johnson owns property within the back area, and has a listing agreement with Mr. Joseph Fitis. Under the abundance of caution, he is, he is given this all. So basically, this is the first stage, in order to list the property, we need to declare surplus and authorize the sale of the property. So there are no attachments to this, but the next one, there's a few attachments to it. And I did, I, if everybody took a look at the, the resolution, I included provisions in there that you'll continue to use the property for governmental purposes during the listing period as, as we discuss some of our concerns, Brian.
Yep, yeah, so I, I took a look at the full resolutions and the addendum, I'm good with that.
Well, we're starting on the, the resolution declaring and authorizing the sale.
Okay, so resolution, so let's see, that is resolution two, two thousand twenty-two dash zero one. Okay.
And I think this is the first resolution, Amy, if I'm correct, that's why I put one.
First resolution this year.
I don't recall doing any other resolutions this year.
Yeah, I think, I think you're correct, Jim. Yeah. Okay. So I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution number two thousand twenty-two dash zero one, resolution declaring and authorizing the sale of certain real property of the Rockland Fire Protection District, Lake County, Illinois.
Second.
And we'll do roll call vote, trustee Bernstein.
Yes.
Trustee Malowski, aye, and trustee Johnson abstain.
Abstain.
All right, so is that all for that agenda item, Jim? The other resolution and the addendum?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So agenda item twelve, discussion action on lease or sale of the Rockland Fire Protection District. So since we just approved the resolution declaring and authorizing the sale, is this where we got to approve the resolution to list with Mr. Joseph Fitis?
Oh, yeah, we have it, we have it on the agenda, and I'm sorry, I didn't look at the most recent agenda, how do I have a copy of the most recent agenda?
So agenda line twelve, we have discussion action on lease or sale of the Rockland Fire Protection District building. So we don't specifically have this, this resolution or addendum, or the listing agreement called out. If you're comfortable with it, we can lump it into, you know, lease or sale of the building. If not, we can schedule that meeting.
Yeah, no, I think we can, we can cover it.
Yeah, that, that's, you know, we've had that agenda item on there for this purpose.
Yeah.
Okay. So, okay, with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution two thousand twenty-two dash zero two, resolution of the Rockland Fire Protection District, Lake County, Illinois approving a listing agreement for the sale of district property, along with approving the addendum, exclusive authorization to sell agreement between Rockland Fire Protection District and Caldwell Banker Realty, along with authorizing, I'll say, President Malowski to sign the listing agreement with Caldwell Banker and John Joseph Fitis as broker.
And just so you know, that there's a listing agreement, and it's eleven pages, which I attached to one of the emails that I sent out. And then I did an addendum.
Yeah.
Basically, what the addendum does is modifies certain terms of the listing agreement and or clarifies certain terms of the listing agreement, precisely because I don't have a, like, a word copy of the listing agreement to make those changes. So I just do it by an addendum, so to the extent there's any conflicts between the listing agreement and the addendum, the addendum terms would govern and control over the listing agreement. And, and basically, what I want to try to spell out in the addendum was the fact that if there was a commission, we, we already know that we're under the threat of, under the name of the state of Illinois, so basically carve that out of the, any commission that the broker perceived on that sale. To the extent it goes over eight hundred and thirty thousand, the commission would pertain to any amount over eight thirty, to the extent the broker is involved with negotiating that sale. I also put in a provision that to the extent the state of Illinois files an amendment to main action against the district regarding the property, there would be no commission that pertains to that, as that would be to, to the court system. Also, I had, there, there was something in the listing agreement about any lease, if, if there was a lease of the building that they've been getting commission, the broker, I should say, for any kind of lease regarding the property. So I, I, I took that out, said that, you know, brokers should not be entitled to any commission for any lease. And also with respect to advertising material, I tried, I put in there that to the extent there's any advertising costs, expenses, that we have to give our okay on that, because there's some provisions in the listing agreement that if we terminate, we're responsible for the repayment of these advertising costs. I, I just have no idea what that would be to my eyes, so. And Marson did send us over to Mr. Joseph Fitis, and he was okay with the provisions in the addendum. If anybody has any questions, let me know.
Okay, I think we're good, Jim. Need me to rephrase, restate my motion again? Or are you just going to pull it from the video? Or are you just gonna pull it from the video?
Yeah, we'll just pull from the video.
Okay, alright, so I made the motion, Amy, did you second it already? I think you did. Go ahead.
I'll second.
Alright.
Jim started talking.
Alright, uh, roll call vote, trustee Bernstein?
Yes.
Trustee Malowski, yes, trustee Johnson?
Abstain.
Thank you, sir. Alright, uh, moving right along, Amy, you still got a couple minutes?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, board discussion update regarding I-DOT, uh, nothing yet, uh, what was his name? Mike Cohen, uh, should be hearing from him end of first quarter, beginning of second quarter next year, as far as I-DOT goes. Unless Mr. Justipitis has information that I don't have, or he gets something to us sooner, um, nothing on the I-DOT front. Number fourteen, other items as maybe lawfully brought before the board. Uh, the only thing I had, there was a FOIA request for, uh, information regarding, uh, I-DOT, uh, from, it appeared to be another, um, broker in the area. Uh, I'm working on that, uh, to reply to him, should get that in the next couple of days. Other than that, nothing else exciting in my email or anything else to report?
Nothing on mine.
Amy, nothing? Chris, anything on your radar?
Nothing.
Alright.
The air is quiet.
Carl, anything?
Nothing.
Alright, with that, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting at six thirty-one.
Second.
Alright, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, anybody oppose? Alright.